Yes, I think we pay it. Yeah.
Are you doing good?
Oh, awesome.
I'm doing good. I don't seem to have screen. We're not getting slapped around.
You know what that's going to be. My house. They do this. Yeah. You know, they go straight. Oh, we don't have any screen. And it changes perfectly. So the snow, not melting. So on that side of the hill. The other people I love.
All right, Gabe.
Snow's gone.
I'm fine. I think they put you right there. I think. I can't see.
How are you doing? How's it going?
Living the dream.
Yeah, really are. We all. Food is in the big conference room by Patty's desk.
Okay.
But then we're going to be over across in the little conference room. So people are just moving it over. If you want to eat rather than do it here.
Right. Yes, sir. You. You aren't standing. Let me get you a little bit. Well, we're in the.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've got a sort of thing. I apologize.
Well, if you have to. So I'm going to listen in here. When I when you're in there. Right there. I want to listen in.
But you don't have a public.
Yeah, we don't on. Just what we know. For like the next or the next meeting in two weeks we will.
Well, I got to hand out now.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
What did they point to?
Uh, community engagement.
He's all right.
He was awesome.
Family is good.
Ah, yes, we are. I'm going to look one.
We are finished with our first executive session. We could have another one a little later. So next on the agenda is board planning. So part of our board retreat is we're going to sit down and talk about some issues about how the board, how we're going to work together as a board, work on some of the issues and areas of common focus. The one thing I'd like us to, all the board members as we sit here, really think about and keep in mind that really our job here as board members is really to work on providing the best possible education for our students and making sure they're prepared for their future. And at the same time, we want to make sure that that includes valuing and respecting our, you know, staff because they are the ones that make this all work. So anyway, at that point, Tracy, would you like to take it from there? We'll get started in our process.
Yep, that sounds good. So you've got the agenda and then you've got the kind of discussion guide that President Connors and I worked on and put together. So there's some timeframes there too, so I'll try to serve as your timekeeper and your facilitator to some extent and we're going to kind of co-facilitate. And this is really the opportunity for the board to talk through lots of things, new group, new chance to get together. And so we started with board processes and really the guiding questions for discussion. In the first part, the first 30 minutes really center on meeting procedures and board relations, operating principles and communications. So one of the things that I know has come up in our individual meetings with new board members, it's just a good refresher for everybody is, you know, how does the board ensure that you know, how, how does the board ensure that meetings are efficient and orderly? How does the board ensure that all board members have an equal opportunity to speak? And the question about meeting agendas and how are those developed and how do those agendas reflect collective board priorities? So I think there's some opportunity for discussion here. A couple of things that I would just share as being, you know, factual is that it's the board president's role to run the meeting and that boards use parliamentary procedure and Robert's Rules of Order to ensure that the board meeting runs efficiently and effectively. And so one of the things that, you know, to cover is are there questions about Robert's Rules? I know, I don't know if historically there's been any training for the board on Robert's Rules. It's just kind of expected that people automatically know them, you know, when you join the board. So is there, are there any points of sort of discussion around Robert's Rules of Order? A parliamentary procedure that would be helpful for the board to talk about when it comes to just how the meetings are run?
For what it's worth, I'm working my way through Robert's Rules for Dummies. So I'm making sure that.
Mike's got a tough job.
Yeah, it's, well, it's a bit, it's a big book. There's a lot of information. So it takes a little while to get through, but it is good trying to, trying to get through it. So I will make mistakes. So I make mistakes along the way. I need people to correct me and make sure that we're doing it properly. If you guys know something I don't.
You can pre-forgiven.
Please let me know.
Well, so in, in that process, I mean, one of the things that's really important is that each individual board member has an opportunity to speak at board meetings if you want to speak. You're not required to speak or share. But so what typically happens in a meeting is the board president is the person running the meeting. And when an individual board member has something to say, wants something to share, they might raise their hand or, you know, somehow signify to the board president that they would like to speak. And then the board president calls on the person, Mr. Galbraith. And then that's your cue, that it's your turn to speak versus everybody, you know, trying to not really know when they jump in. Or some people feeling like they have something to say or want something to say, but they don't know how to get a word in. So I mean, I think one of the things that the board could just agree on is how do you want to do that in the meeting? I've seen boards do it different ways, very formally, raise your hand, just signify like this. But, and of course on Zoom, which, you know, that's a whole different thing, but there's that raise hand feature. But now that we're thankfully back in person and all of that, it's just a new people coming on board, new makeup of a board. It's a good time to figure out how you want that to look. And it's also going to be helpful, I think, for like our student board rep to know, you know, how to wait to be called on for all of us and myself included. And Mr. Connors would then call on us and then it's your time to speak.
It's, well, and one of the things that's, it's in the last, you know, two years as I've been doing this and Ron can, can help me out here is, you know, when we have questions during one of the presentations, you know, let's say Jack's up here giving us a presentation on something. So we'll, hey, stop and we'll just jump in and do that. I mean, if people are okay with that, we can, you know, we can do that if that's what everyone wants to do. But I think we need to agree that we're willing to jump in. But we also need to make sure that we're allowing them time to get their, get through their presentation and we're not, you know, gumming up the works.
Well, so most of the time really we're actually, we're actually interacting with the speaker, right? Not necessarily amongst each other. It's usually the speaker where we're trying to get their attention. Most of them are correct.
It would depend on the situation.
Sometimes we talk, come on also.
I think that our presenters have been generally there, they will stop and say, are there any questions at this point before I move on? That's always a, a good break time to do that unless there's something very strangely unusual.
Right.
I wouldn't think you need to ask in the meantime.
Well, and that's the, because I, I am, for me personally, I'm one of those who's like, oh, wait a minute. You know, I get, I get confused. And if I don't write it down, I want to, hey, stop, can you pass through that? So again, I think we need to make sure if we're okay with that. We, I think we need, we need to, to agree to that.
I think, I think I'm okay with a polite raise of hand. I think that's fine.
That's fine.
I will to the point. But if the speaker says, could you hold questions, say, and I have no respect.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, totally fine with it.
Agreed.
I also think it would be helpful for, we should really have Mr. Connors. If you, even if a staff member is presenting and you have a question, it's really Mr. Connors' role to say, you know, Mr. Mabry and then versus the presenter, because then, then the presenter is not put in the position of sort of running the meeting or determining. Mr. Connors is doing that role.
It's going to make me pay a lot of attention here. I'm getting tired already. Okay, I can do it. If that's, if we're good with that, that's fine. Okay.
I just have a question. You've done this a while and Ron, probably it's a good question for you as well. Are there certain things that you guys have noticed that people typically have, have more trouble with, with Robert's Rules that your experience would?
I would say in, in, in my experience with former boards and different makeup of this board, I think just, just making sure that everybody knows how to get a word in when they want to say something. So some, sometimes people feel really comfortable speaking and that's a good thing. But if, if someone else doesn't really know how to signify that they have something to say, it, it can be frustrating. So I think just being really clear about how do you signify that you have something to say? Who's recognizing you, the board president? And, and just being more formal about it is really helpful. I mean, that's the whole purpose really of Robert's Rules is to ensure that there's an orderly process to the meeting.
My input would be jot your question or your comment down because you may not, you may be the third person that is, that is acknowledged. And you may, if you, like myself, you'll forget the question by the time they get to you. So my, my advice is, it's orderly. That's, that's the purpose. So jot down your question so you won't forget to come back to it. And the same, and the same is someone asks you a question and you can't answer it right away. Jot it down so you can come back to them and not leave them hanging.
Perfect. So just to summarize, so really the signifier is just a little raise of hand. And, and Mr. Connors will be kind of watching who's got their hand up and we'll call on you if you want to speak.
We always have that section. There's always like a board report, section two on the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Where it hits everyone at some point.
Well, and I think the, in the board report, I think it's, you know, I don't want to get off topic, but that is if everyone has a chance to speak, give a report on what they're doing and what's, you know, what interactions they've had with either the community or the schools during that timeframe. So that's good.
Any other areas in, just the, the meeting itself? But we're going to get to agenda building in a moment. But any other questions or concerns about just how the meeting is run in terms of the board's interactions that you want to touch on? Or you have questions about?
I mean, my thing would be just making sure that we have a, have a, a chance to talk amongst us. I feel like that's the thing that I'm kind of worried about is having a chance to, to really like hear Diane's point of view, Ron's point of view and kind of talk amongst us. I mean, our, our purpose is to set the, is to set the goal for the district, right? We set the vision and then you execute it. But if we're not, we're not talking amongst each other, it's really tough to have, to unitedly set a goal when we don't have, when I don't really know where people stand and, right? And so, and then we all, we all come to this thing with our own experiences. So we're bringing kind of things that we would like to see get done or, or, you know, we ran on certain things and people elected us to get those things done. So now that's our job to try to get those things done, right?
And, and well, I guess as, as long as they're within the purview of the school district, yeah, I think that's probably the best way to phrase that is that it's a, we need to make sure that whatever, whatever we're doing is for the betterment, betterment of the school and the children and the staff.
Yep, 100% agree. Yep.
So we're going to get into sort of some priority setting and, you know, goal setting later on in, in the agenda. So, so that will be good. I think the next piece of this is, is really how our meeting agendas developed. And so as we met individually, Mr. Connors and I, with new board members, we explained to you and you, Ms. Sunvik and Mr. Mabry know this, that we've got a, an annual calendar of board meeting topics of when we come and report outcomes to the board as part of our accountability system tied to our strategic plan. And then there's things that are sort of on a seasonal kind of rotation that get put on the agenda. Then there are, and those are more things like recognition and, you know, different, different types of things that come around on the annual basis. Then there's the, the reports that are tied to our strategic plan, staff reports in different areas. Then as staff, as we identify, hey, there's a new law and we need to implement, update a policy to reflect that new law. You, you all know that we'll bring those board policies to you for consideration and approval. And so those things, you know, are not necessar, we might not know right now what the legislature is going to do. And so we can't build that into the agenda ahead of time, but as soon as we're aware of it, it gets built in. So it's sort of a working document and schedule. And then as things come up, they also get on the agenda through board consensus. So for example, we all know that there were some people coming to talk about like the bilingual unit frameworks. And as a result of that, the board said, can you come back and give us a report on this and, you know, where we are moving forward? So then we staff worked on that and came back at a, at a future meeting where that was put on the agenda. It's important that the agendas are formed and communicated ahead of time because the public has a right to know what the board's talking about. And we can't just put things on the agenda to talk about that night. Because now we haven't communicated or the board hasn't communicated to the public what the board's going to be talking about. So as a member of the public, if I see that there's a topic on the agenda that the board's going to discuss, I might want to come and make public comments and have the board know my, you know, opinion on that as, as a member of the public. So that's why the agenda just doesn't get built on the fly. So one of the things though, I think that the board can sort of talk about is, I'll just give some simple examples. Ms. Sunvik might want to talk about Hershey bars. I'm just making up silly things. And Mr. Galbraith might want to talk about peanut butter cups. And Mr. Connors might want to talk about Milky Ways. And you get my point. So there, each individual board member might have things that they want to talk about, but the board has to determine together through consensus, what do you want to talk about and put on the agenda for board discussion? So I think that's one of the things, and it might connect to a later part of the agendas. How does the board want to go through some sort of regular priority setting process to agree on, these are some things that we would like to see and have time to discuss on the agenda? Or we want you to research this particular thing and we want staff to come back with a report on it. But what, what doesn't work is if you want her, a report on Hershey bars and you want to report on Reese's and you want to report on Milky Way and you want to report on something else. The, we need a, some, you know, collective direction from the board as, as a staff. So I guess that's sort of the question on the table is, and I, I might suggest that when we get to that priority discussion time, that might be a time where the board says, okay, here's some priorities and this is what we want you to do and how we want to get those on the agenda moving forward.
When does that discussion time happen?
To, that's.
Oh, I mean today.
That is part.
It's on the list.
B.
No, I mean today I see that, but like in the future.
Well, that's actually kind of part of it too, is does the board want to figure out some way to come together to determine what those priorities are on a regular basis? So it's.
So to, to unpack all of that, for, for, I guess, to my understanding, so the agendas are pre-built to a sense. There's things that are going to automatically be on the, the agendas moving forward, right? And then if we want to get something on the agenda, that's where I'm going to reach out to President Connors and say, I want, can we get this on the agenda? Now, if, now, am I understanding correctly, consensus wise, that we have to agree to put it on the agenda? Like as a, like as a group, as, as directors are going to have to say, okay, yeah, let's put that on the agenda to talk about? Or is there, could there be something where I'm like, hey, I want to get this on the agenda, I want to talk about it? And then it never gets on the agenda because nobody else wants to talk about it. Is that possible? Or how does that work?
Yeah.
It is. And that is possible. And that's one of the things we need to talk about.
Okay.
So, and, and an interesting question comes up as I'm thinking about this, because one of the things, you know, if we, if we start sending emails to everyone, all of a sudden, you know, we now have public records and, and open meeting issues. And so we want to make sure that, that we're, we have time, again, set aside where we can set, okay, what do we want to, how do we work on it? How, so, so how do we have that conversation, making sure we're abiding by, you know, the spirit and the intent of the law? You know, making sure that all that conversations are in the, in a public setting.
Great. So for example, you could potentially, I mean, we could carve out, I'm, I'm just throwing out brainstorming ideas. You could periodically have a kind of a study session or this sort of format to just simply talk about priorities that you'd like to see addressed moving forward. Those are outlined in the strategic plan, but then there's also things that come up, right? Periodically that aren't built into that strategic plan. So you want to have the opportunity to say, hey, this is important to us as a board. And we, we want you to research it and come back with some information and then we want to discuss it. So, so you, you'll have to figure out how you want to carve the time out to, to do that. Another option would be for me to communicate with you and say, here's a list of five things that were generated. And you could individually send back to me, here's your priority, or send back to, to Mr. Connors and me. So then we're, it's one, it's two board members and the superintendent. And so there are things that we can do, you know, over email to get those priorities identified. And it's really up to, I, it's just a matter of how you want to design this. If, I'm not, I mean, this is your work and, and your meeting. So I'm not directing you on how you want to set up the meetings. I'm just simply suggesting a couple of things. If, if each individual person says, I want this on the agenda, I want this on the agenda, I want, you could have, you can do that. It's just up to you if you want to do it. The one thing that is challenging for, for staff is if each individual board member is saying, I want you, I, I, I believe this is important and I want you to go research and do work on it. But it's not a priority for the other board members. It's, it, it puts a lot of work on, on staff, which is fine. That's what we're here for. But really the board should be working collectively as a group on the priority consensus areas that you all feel, at least that you, through consensus feel are, are important, that you want the district to be working on or that you want to discuss.
Yes.
So I, I don't, I honestly don't see a problem with the way that we're presently doing it. But I like to define what I think presently happened and what I've experienced in the past is that we have an agenda, a predetermined agenda. Like tonight, we were sent, before the meeting, we were sent a packet with what it was going to be, what's going to be on the agenda. If we have something additional, what I've done in the past is I've sent President and, and you a note saying, this is important. I'll give you an example. Someone at school would come to me and say, hey, this problem happened at school. I saw a kid sitting on the floor eating. Just an example, just an example. And you say, okay, that's important to me. So I contact the president, say, what's the possibility of talking about that at the next meeting? President contacts you, I contact both of you and say, okay, we'll put that on the agenda. Because that's something outside of what was planned to be on the agenda already. So I see two phases. The agenda is already predetermined and that comes out in our notes, in our notice of meeting. Then if there's something else, that gets determined by you two when we get on the agenda.
Now, you know, really I'm not your, I'm not the, the gatekeeper of that. It's really got to be the, how the board wants to decide what's on the board meeting agendas.
In the past, it would have gone to President Adams. She would have spoken to you. President Adams would have made the decision. So now it'll go to you. You'll talk to Dr. Pierce. You know, you will make the decision based on input from them.
And that's kind of, yeah, and I, I, that's what I'm looking for. So, right? Because as things come up or we're out in the community, your point, something's going to come up. So having the ability to reach out, say, you know, the Thursday or Friday beforehand and say, hey, this is important or whatever beforehand and say, can we get it on the agenda? As long, as long as that all meets the, the notice period and all that stuff, then, then we should have the time. But yeah, ultimately I would imagine you would have the decision to, to do that. But yeah, ultimately, I would imagine you would have the decision to do that based on what's come in.
So basically, I want to hear from you guys, because if that's you guys, if that's how you guys want to do that, that's fine. You know, we would probably put that under new business, I would assume, at the end of the, we had that at the end of the meeting, don't we? So if that's the case, yes, sir.
Why can't we have more meetings like this? I mean, we have, what, one or two of these a year? Why can't we do one a quarter and replace a traditional meeting with more of a workshop type of a meeting? Or, and/or, replace one of these traditional meetings with like a community town hall type of thing where we can take question and engage in that way? Like, why can't we do that?
So we're, well, we're going to cover that here in the next part of the, part of the conversation, part of the, part of the community outreach or community--
Oh, section C?
Yeah. So we're going to, yeah, we're going to talk about that as, you know, community engagement.
And workshop meetings can be added in addition to--
Right.
Many districts have done that. If something important comes up that needs to be done, I mean, that's certainly always an opportunity.
Right. So Micah, so when, you know, we built the meeting schedule for this year, you know, last year, before you guys elected, so that, the bus is running down the road. Now, as you and I spoke before, if we want to add a meeting, you guys say, hey, look, the board decides it's really important we have more workshops. We can certainly add a meeting. But at this point, to go change an existing meeting, I don't think is really on the docket. We can certainly add a workshop.
Why? Why not?
Because we've set them up, we've got the, it's in place, it's going down the road. Now, next year, for 20, you know, for 2022, 2023, if we say, hey, look, we want to do quarterly workshop instead of a meeting, absolutely. We can totally do that.
So we just be, I mean--
So, okay, so we've already got, so say in August, we already have two meetings scheduled and they're already, this is getting reported out, the first one, this is the second one. So those meetings have already somewhat been--
They've--
Built out. So that's why--
Yes.
That's why we can't adjust to like a retreat like this for one of those meetings right now. That's, that's what we're--
Yeah. And so September of next year, again, if we decide next year that we want to go do this, you know, we can absolutely have, you know, change some of these meetings into workshops. And if that's what you want to do, I'm all for it. I think it's a great way for us to have different conversations. But again, and I don't want to sound harsh, but, you know, we already made the decision and laid out the plan for this year prior to your joining the board. Because you joined the board, we're not going to change. We will absolutely have input going into the next, next year. And want your input on how, on how we form those meetings.
And staff has done a lot of work and they have reports to be done for us at certain periods of time. And I think that would, we don't want to negate the very hard work that staff has done to bring that information to us.
So this year, we'd have to add a meeting.
We would have to add a meeting. And again, if you guys want to add a meeting and everyone's okay--
Versus exchange.
Correct. So if you guys want to do another one of these here in the springtime, just, we'll vote on it. And if that's what we want to do, wahoo, we'll have another meeting. So, yeah, please. Hold on, just a second.
Just the only other thing I would say is that some of, some of the things that we report on annually are grounded in either law or policy that we're, should report to the board on it annually. So that's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, Micah.
Well, I mean, okay, so we were all asked what things, you know, we were all elected, we have ideas, we ran on things, right? We talked to the community, we believe we have the pulse of the community. We're coming in here, we have 30 minutes to discuss it, we have five people. I mean, do the math, we got a couple of minutes to discuss our entire campaign, the entire thing, all the things that we believe in. I mean, and then the next time we have a chance to discuss that is, I just don't think it's enough time.
Okay, but we're worried about your, I'm sorry, we're worried about your campaign?
Worried about, no, like the, when you, when you promise community members that you're going to do something that they really believe in, and we won by a super majority and then, and we look at people in the eyes and we say, yeah, we're going to go get that done for you because we believe in that, you know? And then we don't have an opportunity really, we have, you know, to really bring it in front of the people and bring it in front of the board, that's really difficult, right? Because you're, you're saying, hey, you know, we really believe in some things, the community is counting on us to go get some things, you know, to really work on their behalf because we're elected officials on their behalf. And that's our job, right? So we have things we want, we'd like to talk about. And then you say, okay, well, Gabe, you've got two minutes to talk about all those things or three minutes or five minutes, it's just, I don't know how much, if that's enough time to really get into the discussion.
Yes, sir. Ron.
Wouldn't that be the opportunity that you would call and say, I want this on the agenda? And at that time, you would call Micah and say, hey, I have this item that I want to discuss that we haven't identified as been touched upon or planned to be touched upon? And ask that that be added to the agenda? And that's your opportunity to do your discussion.
Okay, so that's, okay, so the good point of clarification. So then, at any point during the year, anytime President Connors, I want to talk about this, let's get it on the agenda. Once it's on the agenda, it's new business. Then that's, that's the collaborative discussion of the board under new business, to have that discussion at that point, correct? Is that what I'm, okay.
And thank, I'm sorry.
Yes. So typically, what's happened in the past is something will have, will come up and a board member will say, would say to the board president, I'd like to talk, I'd like to get this on the next agenda. And if there's information that you need me to get, research that you need me to do and my team to do, we just need the time to be able to do that adequately to come back at the next board meeting and provide whatever information report that you need from us. And then the board would be able to talk about that topic. So it's just a matter of surfacing it and--
So we can have this type of a discussion in a board meeting if we get a certain topic on the agenda? We can have a discussion between, okay.
Correct. So I will, I will ask, though, that, you know, if all of a sudden you come up with three things for one meeting, you want three things the next meeting? We're going, we will, we will take them one at a time, especially if they're weighty issues that I'm assuming they are. You know, coming at us to the, you know, we need to have time to have an intelligent, well thought out, well researched discussion on all, all topics. And especially for some of the things that I imagine you guys are going to want to talk about. We need to make sure that we're ahead of it and everyone has information in order to sit down and have those, you know--
Robust discussions.
Robust, professional, you know, courteous discussions. So I think it's important to reiterate some of that.
Yeah.
Okay?
So actually, that might be a really good segue. And as your time keeper, it looks like we're keeping to time here. So the, the next section is really focused on that whole idea of board relations. It's pretty normal for, when a new group gets together to really focus on and talk about operating principles and norms of the group and how communications are going to be, be done. And there are some things in board policy that exist. And, and I think there's some opportunity for the board to talk about that a little bit more in depth. And then we're going to get into the priority area discussion. So a couple of things that are currently in policy, and these were sent to you before, but I said I, we bring hard copies here. There's Board Policy 1500, which outlines the powers and duties of the board. And as you all know, it's through the law and the legislature specifies what the duties and roles of school boards are in our, in our state. So all of this is grounded in law. And the main powers and duties of the board are community representation, policy development, operations assessment, fiscal management, and dispute resolution. And Mr. Connors and I were able to, through the kind of board onboarding process, talk to Mr. Galbraith and Mr. Valentine about some of this. And of course, Mr. Mayberry and Ms. Sundvik know this as well. And then there's a regulation that goes with 1500 that is the Board of Directors Code of Ethics. And so in terms of process, what we thought would be helpful would be to give each board member just individually a few minutes, a couple of minutes to read through the Code of Ethics. There's 15 things listed here in the regulation for 1500. And just individually identify, well, they're all important and they're all codified in policies being the Board Code of Ethics. Are there some three to five that stand out to you right now as being high priority for the board as the board comes together as a new group? So we'll just give--
Couple minutes.
Three minutes or so, two, two, three minutes for you to look through that and identify those.
Got it all figured out, Gabe?
I do. Memorized.
I got to cheat. I knew it was coming, so I got to do my homework yesterday.
It'll be a test, Gabe, at the end, right?
I saw, I saw the email today, so I looked at it a little bit earlier.
That's good.
All right.
Didn't make it any easier, did it?
No, it did not.
All right, you guys ready? You guys have a chance to go through that? Yep. We'll go around here with, so what I, what I would like to do basically is just is kind of get your, like everyone gets to give their top, you know, three or four, if you have four that are really important. Just get a feel for kind of what everyone thinks are really the most important thing on this Code of Ethics. Diane, I'd like to, ladies go first.
So when I was looking at this this afternoon, I kind of thought maybe Dr. Pierce was going to ask this. And it's like, it's, it's hard to choose because these have been made over time and, and each one of them meets different needs that our district has. And so I, I don't know that I have priorities set, but number three, obviously make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children in public schools and meet the needs of our individual students, no matter what their circumstances are. I think that's the overarching perhaps of the rest of these. And then number seven, this is, this is such an interesting thing. So recognize that our responsibility is not to run the district, run the schools, but together with fellow board members to see that they run well. And different people have different opinions about how that works. And so I think strong help from you will help us do that in a, in a better way. Or not a better way, but help us to do that, I guess. And so I think that's just always an important, and confine our activity to policymaking. You know, we don't do the day to day, we, we hire excellent staff members to do the day to day. And that we are here for policy planning and appraisal of things. And then number nine, arrive at conclusions with lots of discussion, as Micah has talked about. And I wrote a little note to myself, I'm seeing if I can read what I wrote. Also that we speak as one, that the board speaks as one. So when the board makes a decision, whether I will be on one side or other of a decision, the board still speaks as one and that is my decision, I'm a part of that decision. And so when we speak to the public or anybody else, the board's decision is, the board's decision was. And it might be apparent that my decision was not on one side or the other, if you attended the meeting, but I'm still speaking as the board and I will still concur with the board's decision on that. So I think that's pretty appropriate. And we've had some robust discussions before, but we still speak as one at the end. And I think that's very important.
Well, and we learned a great deal here last year, last two years. So and I think, I think that was a learning experience for everyone, me especially. So I think that there were some hard lessons learned.
Yeah.
So, it's good. Perfect. Gabe?
Yeah, so I would agree with three. So I highlighted three, make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children. Also, six, I mean, obviously, all these are very important, but six jumped out to me. So strive to ensure that people are accurately informed about our schools. I think that's extremely important. And then, of course, another one that caught my eye of the group is 12. So holding confidential matters, confidential. I think probably everybody's been in a situation where they're somewhere and someone's talking about someone and you just kind of have to, just walk away, let it go. So those are the three I highlighted.
Great. Cool. Thank you. Mr. Mayberry?
I'm in agreement with Gabe, also Diane, but Gabe, he's reading my mind there. So for, I think number two is also very important. We hold up a poll and enforce our laws, state rules and regulations, their court orders, changes schools.
Cool. Wonderful. Mr. Valentine?
I would say two, three, and four. Specifically, three. I think that is, that is our job. You've even said that, remind you a couple of times, that our job is to produce kids at the end of the day that, that can succeed in life, right? That is our job. So I think that the, making sure they're getting the right education, that, that we're helping them make up these, this lost time that they had and so they can succeed in life, I think that is, that is our primary focus.
Well, so we're going to, we're going to celebrate the fact that all of us voted for number three.
Yeah.
So there was complete consensus there. So we need, so there you go.
Good.
Are you sharing yours?
I am.
Oh, good.
So mine is, my first one was number three. My second one was actually really to be a staunch advocate for free public education, number one. I just, I just think that's--
I agree.
I think it's, it's a, it's very important that we put forward the best educational experience we can for our kids. And it's going to look different for everybody. But I think it's just so important that that really needs to be one of our overriding, you know, overriding things. And again, number nine, you know, make sure that we're arriving at conclusions only after discussing with, discussing all aspects with everyone. And, you know, I, I laugh, one of my dear friends and I, we disagree on a lot of things. But one of the things we have talked about is when we're having a conversation, we need to listen to understand and not listen to respond. Because a lot of times we're so concerned about being right that we're not listening because, you know, we might learn something. And that goes, and really, and that goes for everyone, especially me. You know, I have a horrible time speaking my mind when I should really just stop talking and listen. And again, we have a very diverse board and we all need to listen. And we all need to stop and think and, because God forbid, we'd actually learn something from someone else. And I think that's something really, really important that we need to stay focused on.
So I jotted down, and I can share this back with the board, but you're right, there's a lot of areas of agreement, which is great. And, and so I think the other question, is there anything here on the Code of Ethics that individual board members read and said, that's, that's, that's not something I can commit to?
I don't think so.
I hope not.
No, absolutely not.
So this is great. Like I said, I'll, I'll send this back to you, kind of what those areas are. And a couple of people mentioned it, it's not that the areas, they're all important. And I think the board recognizes that they're all important. And so I, I feel that the Code of Ethics sort of codifies what, what, what the underlying beliefs are. And then operating principles or norms are about how, how do these, these ideas look in action when the board is interacting with one another, interacting with the community, whether that's in person or over email and that kind of thing. So, so the next part of this portion of the agenda is to think about two or three, three to five at the max, sort of operating principles or norms that the board would want to agree to tied to the Code of Ethics that would help ensure that we're together, you know, operating in alignment with the Code of Ethics. And I, I didn't get this out-- And I didn't get this out to you ahead of time. I just thought to print it out later this afternoon. I know you all have professional lives and work with teams and know what norms and operating principles look like. I just printed out a sample of some from a balanced careers website. I don't even really know what that is. I just kind of Googled and found some sample norms or guidelines. So again, this is about, as the board is discussing items, for example, that might... There might be diverse opinions about. Or the board's interacting with the public, communicating on email, communicating in person. Are there some norms or operating principles that you want to develop to agree to? Did I not give you enough, or...
I think I have the agenda again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you can never have so many agendas.
Ron's got a stack.
I think I got your Cliff Notes.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Ron's hoarder.
Yeah, I got one, thank you.
Sorry about that. So again, these are just examples. And so I thought, we thought we could give you a couple of minutes just to look over some of these examples. You're not bound to these examples. You could come up with your own. But if we could have the board together come up with three to five operating principles or norms, that'd be helpful for the board, I think. Did I make enough? I was trying to make... I did make...
All right, so everyone had a chance to redo everything?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Just real quick, we thought, I did make enough... I did make extra copies so members of the community who are here could look at some of the things that we're looking at. I just didn't... So...
All right, so we're going to go through these again? Just go take a...
Yeah, so again, this is just a sample document of norms and operating principles. And so in this part, we thought it would be good to have the opportunity for each board member to say, you know, what's one operating principle you would like to suggest for the board, either from this list or not on the list? And then we can see if there's some agreement on the top three or five or something. If you have more than one to share, you can share more than one. And I'll take notes.
Perfect. All right. Diane, I'm going to go stick with my staying program. I'm going to have you go first, please.
So it's going to be the listen first to understand, which Mike had already talked about. I'd like to put the one right under that, together with that, so A and B. So you're going to have listen first to understand, don't be dismissive of input received when you listen. And then practice being open-minded. I think they go together. You would need to be open-minded to be doing that.
Perfect. Wonderful. Gabe?
So first, I have transparency. So no, nothing hidden. And I also have issues are not personal. Everyone's coming from a place of good intention and have their ideas and want to share. And so I think, you know, then it ties into, and listen and be open-minded and...
Perfect. Good. Wonderful, thank you. Micah?
Just give Pierce a minute. She's trying to write.
Did you skip Ron?
Yes, I did, I'm sorry. See, William?
Ron doesn't like you.
It's okay.
This was way harder than the other one.
And then, Gabe, what was your...
These are like all really...
Yep. And then, where did it say? Issues.
Not personal.
Yeah. That was like the middle of it. Yeah. Issues, ideas, or not personal attacks.
The discussion of issue, ideas, and direction will not become a personal attack or return to the future.
It's a long sentence.
Ron told me that one.
Cliff Notes. Right, Ron, once more time. Micah, you know what you...
You want me to go?
Please.
This list was way harder. These are all so good. But I like to be genuine with each other about ideas, challenges, and feelings. I mean, obviously, we're going to disagree on things, that we need to be genuine about that. And then I agree with Diane when she said, "Listen, understand, don't be dismissive." That was great. And I added one of my own, which is choose not to be offended. You know, we're here about the kids. That's our focus. So we're talking, we should be talking to each other, but the ultimate goal is about the kids. So let's not get offended, you know? And let's not hold a grudge.
Perfect. Ron?
Trust. Trust each other. That blends in with the sentiment that's been stated, that we're here for the kids. We need to trust that that is what we're here for. And the parents, and, you know, the secondary. Strive to continuously improve. That should be our God-enforced, always improve. Oh, did I say dignity? Treat each other with dignity and respect. Is that already up there?
No.
I mean, they're all really good.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ron?
No, that is it.
Okay, perfect. Really, I have, at this point, I have nothing new. All mine are up there. So we're all good. But yeah, my number one is right off the top, treat each other with dignity and respect. So...
I want to add another one, but I'd like to rephrase it. Down a little below the middle, it says, "Problems are presented in a way that promotes mutual discussion and resolution." I don't see those as problems. They're just issues that come up, things that we are discussing. Problems makes it sound rather negative. So when issues come up, we talk about them, mutual discussion, mutual understanding of them. So when staff brings things to us, they're not necessarily problems. They're issues that have come up that we need to find solutions for.
I'm going to make one up here. This is... Yeah, please.
Right.
Diane, can you help me just...
Sure. I just said, I changed the word "problems" to "issues." And it says, "Issues are presented in a way that promotes mutual discussion and resolution." Needs to not be so negative.
Mutual discussion?
And resolution.
Thank you.
And the one thing I... One of the sayings around my house that I think is somewhat apropos is we need to learn to be... We need to learn to disagree without being disagreeable.
Do your kids roll their eyes at you?
Absolutely.
Never. Never.
Anything else you want to add to the list?
I think it's a great start.
So one of the processes we'll often use in working with staff is to do a thumb vote. You're not really voting on any, you know, you're voting on your own business. But just through consensus, like a thumbs up, if I really like this, like definitely can commit to this 100%. I can live with it, but, you know, and I won't disagree with it, or I really can't live with this. So we'll just go through each one real quick, and you can do a thumb vote. And we can see where there's agreement. And then we can codify this in a document that we can just, you know, keep it adiased during board meetings. Kind of keep people, keep these on the forefront. And so, treat each other...
Tracy, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. So are we trying to narrow this down? Or are we trying, or we just want to...
That's up to you.
What do we have, one, two, three, four, five, six?
Right now, there's... Because some of them are a little...
Yeah.
Right now, there's 11.
So do you guys... I mean, we can scratch off my, you know, disagree with, like, disagreeable, and we have a nice, you know, list of 10.
Is there something that you think covers that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, just take the scratch, yeah. Scratch number three off there. Then we have a nice list of 10 operating principles that we all agree to.
Would you like to do thumb votes and see if there's any... Because it might not be that one that has some sidewaysness to determine which one you want to lob off to make there be only 10?
I'm full thumbs up on all of them.
I'm afraid I am too.
I think if we keep talking longer, we're going to add more.
Yeah, exactly.
So I'm good with taking off the one that keeps...
Yeah, just... Yeah, just scratch number three. That's all right. We just... That goes into tweet... That goes into tweet...
We want to be disagreeable.
Yeah, scratch it.
Now you're good.
Perfect. All right, there's our 10 operating principles. Love it. Look at the symmetry.
Helpful just to...
No, it's good. Yeah, it's really good.
Yeah. So the first part of the agenda we put together to really get at some of these things. We're almost done with this first part. We're right on time before we get into some of the more actual meaty discussion and prioritization, which then gives the board a great opportunity to practice the operating principles you just came up with.
Right.
So but one more thing about operating principles in that area, we're still on B here on the agenda. Or wait, I'm sorry, we're on... Yeah. So one thing I think that would be helpful for you all to come to common agreement on is responding to community emails from community members in that past practice has been that if a community member emails the board collectively, the KSD board, the board president responds to that email. We are all on that email. And typically, with the board president, it's typically a question that requires staff to look into. And so that's the board president's opportunity to say, well, ask the superintendent to look into that and follow up with you. Typically, what happens is each individual board member doesn't respond because thinking about that one voice or researching topics before the board comes to a decision on it, that's not... That opportunity doesn't happen. It can also be very confusing for community members. So if a parent or community member emails that board email, and I get one response from Ms. Sundick and maybe a little bit different response from Mr. Galbraith, and different response from Mr. Mabry, it's very confusing to the community member. So is that how the board still wants to operate? Other times, community members will email you each individually. And so that's different. They're emailing you as an individual board member versus the board as the body. So is that still how you want to continue to do that?
Mike, you're going to respond, if they were sent it to the whole KSD, only you respond. But you still reply all, or just you respond to that person?
I will. If anything comes through that says, that's to the board and everyone, I reply all. So everyone sees that I replied to the email. There have been a couple of cases where someone, you know, again, Diane's beaten the punch a couple of times, so I have not responded. But that's kind of what we need to do. If that's what we're going to do, I'll just make sure every day I'm checking my email, you know, once, twice a day, responding as necessary. If nothing more than, you know, you know, we received your email, thank you very much. We'll, you know... Because sometimes a lot of the emails are information, especially currently, a lot of the informations are here is information. And none of us can take a position on the information they're sending us. We can just, yes, we received your information, thank you. Because that's really all we can do. Anything else is, we're going down a different road. So...
Right. And there was another one. Sometimes they're asking, a person's asking a question about a particular practice in the district around credit or something. And... But they'll email the board. A lot of times, those questions just come right to administration. But if they email the board, then it's the board's opportunity to say, "You'll help me look into that." And then I was able to, for example, in one recently, let the person, just get back to the person and say, "I'm still looking into that, I'll get back to you." So they know we're being responsive and we are working on it. But it's more of a question about a practice or something versus, you know, information. So...
Okay. Great.
The one thing that I... A really good thing that I learned from a speaker a couple of meetings ago was she said, "I've emailed all of you, and I've not received any information." And we've also gotten emails from people who said that. And I said, "Would it be satisfactory to you if I just say, 'Thank you, I've received your email'?" And she said, "That would be great, thank you." And so I've started to do that, and I've CC'd you on that. So I don't give any information. I just say, "Thank you, blank, I have received your email." And I sign my name. And I think that's really common courtesy, because at least somebody knows that that has gotten through. I have no way of knowing if I don't receive anything back. Not saying that you're not going to answer, but that that person then knows that that email has been received. And I think in businesses, that's how we do business, and so we should do no less than that.
So clarifying question about that. So I just think it's important that the... So if I'm a community member and I email the KSD board, and that email goes to all of you. If Mr. Connors answers that email as board president, then the person knows that he's responding on behalf of the board. If each individual board member also does it, if you do it, but then Mr. Galbraith doesn't, or Mr. Mabry doesn't, then it can be like, "Well, I always hear from Ms. Sundick," or "But I don't hear from Mr. Mabry." But that's because Mr. Mabry is operating under the understanding that Mr. Connors is doing that. So I think that's why it's just important. And we can be... We could even put something on the website to say, you know, when an email comes into the KSD board, the board president will respond to your email. And again, it's also not the board president's role to say, "Here's the board's decision about that," or "Here's the board's position on that," unless there's already been discussion about what the board's position is on it. what the board's position is on it. But if it's something that the board needs to discuss at a future meeting, then it's really the role of the Board President to acknowledge the email on behalf of the board. So that's, that's my only input on that.
And I, and I would agree with that, and I trust Mike to always do that. It's interesting that you would use that example, because some people have said, "I never hear from you, but I always hear from X." So that has been an issue in the past. That was my way of thinking to try to ameliorate that. But what you're saying really makes much more sense.
Yeah. It's also just an efficiency thing. It's like, you know.
So, so would it be appropriate, I feel like it would be, if there's, somebody says something, and Gabe really kind of has his feelings on that, and he can respond to that, like you would respond and say, "Yes, we'll look into it," or whatever. But maybe Gabe has a unique perspective on it. And so I actually have no problem with Gabe occasionally, like whoever responded directly to her and said, "Hey, this is my opinion, not the, not the board's opinion," and just has a dialogue with her. I don't have a problem with that.
But that's, but, but the problem is, we're no longer speaking with one voice. We're now speaking as one board member, and you're giving your position. And so that's not what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to build continuity. We're trying to, to get to the point where we're building consensus. Because if, if we go down that road, all the same, "Well, here's my opinion, here's my opinion, here's my opinion," that's great. None of it counts for anything until we sit here in this room and make a decision about that various opinion. And we can come into that public, public domain and have that conversation where we can have, go back and forth. That's.
Well, that, that does make sense, yeah.
And if you go back to the Board Code of Ethics, number nine, right, says, "Arrive at conclusions only after discussing all aspects of the issues at hand with fellow board members assembled at a meeting." So if at that point, the, the board member says, "Well, I believe this," one individual board member, it really isn't adhering to that.
Well, it's not, you're not arriving at a conclusion. You're just dialoguing.
Well, if you say, "I agree, I believe that that's really XYZ," or whatever, it's kind of coming to that conclusion.
And we have changed our minds. We do change our minds over discussion and with more information. So that could, you could change.
Yes. So following on with Micah's asking, I do have a question. What if a community member emails you and say, "Hey, this, 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 and this," and you personally want more amplifying information, so that when I do bring it to you, I would have more information to share with you, or to you I would have. So like, what time, what, when, where? Those kind of questions. It seems like we, we could ask those questions. And I'm asking, not asking, would that be acceptable?
I think so, yeah. Because basically, we're trying, in that case, in the example we were giving, you're trying to, to gain more knowledge about the question at hand in order to come back hopefully to the board and say, "Okay, hey, board, this is, this was brought to my attention. Here's the question. What do we need? Here, here's the, the way it was presented to me." But I think that's, that would be the way I would handle that. Now, so, so here's, so to follow on that, and to, to go along with Micah's question as well. Now, Micah, if someone says, sends you an email, you know, to your personal, "Hey, what do you think about this?" If that's a conversation back and forth between you and a, and a specific parent or community member, I think that's, and Tracy, committed if I'm wrong, if you're having that conversation here, "What do you think about this?" "Hey, you know, my, my stance is X." You know, that's fine.
Yeah, I agree. We should respond to that one.
Absolutely. And, and you can do that. But again, where you're now copying all, and say, "Here's the whole, you know, we're, we're, we're all on the whole email, and hey, this is my belief," I don't think that's the right, it's not the right form for it.
Okay.
So an email comes through to the all staff, all, all school board email, you're taking those, you're gonna respond, "Thank you, received," whatever action needs to be taken.
Correct.
I think that does need to be on the website, then. Yeah. I think, I think that needs to be clarified, so that they have that expectation.
And, and I would also like to have that at the beginning of every meeting, because we do talk about the fact that, you know, if you have specifics about a specific situation, please email, and then just say again, "Please email all if you wish. Mr. Connors will answer that for you," just so that everybody's very clear on the same board.
Yeah, absolutely. I, we, we will put that on the website. Kind of following up on what, what Mr. Mabry mentioned. So I keep, look, I keep using candy examples, because there's candies in front of me. But if there's a, a parent or a community member that calls Mr. Mabry and says, you know, "I really think we should have more Reese's Peanut Butter Cups in the, in the school district." And it's absolutely appropriate to, to, for Mr. Mabry to say, you know, "Tell me more about why you think that should be. What's been your experience? What is it?" I think where it gets problematic is, is if Mr. Mabry says, "Yeah, I agree with you 100%. We should have more of those." It, it's problematic in two ways. One, it hasn't come back to the board for a discussion, and it also kind of puts Mr. Mabry in a, in a bad position if the rest of the board doesn't think we should have more peanut butter cups. Because now he's kind of set up that community member for disappointment, and like, why, why did, why was, why did I hear Mr. Mabry telling me he agrees, but then it doesn't really go anywhere because nobody else agrees. So there's a difference between seeking information and listening to constituents and community members and trying to be informed. So you have enough information to bring back to the full board as an individual board member to say, "This is really what people have shared with me, and this is what I'm hearing from people about this topic."
Fair enough.
And I think that, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, guys. But it sort of flies in the face of transparency, though, which is one of our guidelines, in that I feel like I should be able to say to, to someone that reached out to me how I individually feel about it.
I agree.
But we're gonna take it to the board and discuss it, and if the board comes up with a different answer, that's what we are as a board. But you don't give up your individual ally, your individual thoughts until you throw it out there and get better thoughts, or get more, you know, concise, a group thing, then may change my mind.
Like a little disclaimer. Like, this is.
Yeah, the, the person is reaching out to you individually because they have some kind of connection with you individually. And that's what they want to establish. They want to keep that in place. And if I'm not honest with that person with my view, I'm gonna lose that, that person as a, as a trust, you know, as a voice from the community. So I, I want to keep my transparency open and share what I feel, but stress that we are a board, and with the board decision is what I'm gonna go with.
Yeah. And I think that's a really good point, if I can just jump in. And I think there's the balance. I, I think that what you raised is really important. And then there's that kind of, it was one of these, I know it's not one of these, about not throwing each other, each other under the bus, so to speak, right? So what can also happen, though, is if, and this was, we had, you know, the board had kind of talked about some of these dynamics at a, at a previous meeting, right, where if the board agrees on something, I mean, the board's gonna vote on something, and maybe it's not gonna be a consensus vote. Then, then it's like, it can, there's a fine line between sort of throwing each under, each other under the bus, and not like giving up your individual.
Good point.
I, I don't know how, I don't know if I'm making sense.
You are.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I give up the floor. Just a second. It's a great point, and that's when you go back to whomever you had that conversation with, and said, "Hey, the board came up with some good points. They made sense, and now I'm following the board consensus. We are consensus." And I think if we do that enough, the person that calls me or contacts me will understand that I have a point of view, but when it comes down to the board, I'm gonna agree with whatever the board comes up with. That decision is the final decision. So you still have that conversation, but you made that one. Sorry.
There, so this was one that we haven't quite discussed, but it's sort of been hinted at a few times, is, is when the board comes to a consensus, and that becomes our new opinion or whatever, we could. There are a couple of exceptions to that, which I will not. There's hills I will die on. And, and there are some exceptions, like if we say, "We are going to have forced vaccines," or, and then four people vote, "Yes," and I say, "No, I, I'm not going to come to consensus on that." If we say, "We are going to teach something in our school that I really disagree with," there's a few things that I'm absolutely not going to agree with the board, and I will not come to consensus no matter what, because it's, it's so deep personal belief that I have, that I'm not going to change my opinion. I might not say a whole lot about it, maybe, or something. Maybe I'll try to be nice about it, be respectful. But I am, there's, there's a few things that I'm absolutely gonna die on a hill of. I'm just, just, so, so I do want to have that harmony, and I think that that's not gonna happen very often. But there might become an occasion where it's something that I feel so deep and personal and passionate about, that I am just absolutely not going to do.
So my, which I can appreciate, and I understand, I think the important thing is, though, if we come to a vote, and, and in this case, let's, let's just say it's a, it's a four to one, and you, this is something, again, the hill you're gonna die on, that's fine, and that's absolutely your prerogative. However, you know, it, it will be a settled issue at that point, at which, at which point you will then have to, you don't have to like it, you know. It, it, trust me, there are things I didn't like. I, you know, I lost votes last year, and I was hopping around on one foot, and I readily admit that. We all did. And so, but I think the important thing here is that regardless, that's now, that's the new reality that we have to live with. If at some point, there comes a reason to revisit those decisions, and there's a reason that comes for the board that we need to revisit it again, that's great. But what we can't have is, is the board members run around rallying against the other, because that, that just doesn't work. We have to be a cohesive, you know, board that, that works together. You're gonna lose some votes. It's just, it's just reality. I lost votes. It was reality. It was painful. It was unfun. And, and in some cases, I was a very sore loser. And again, I readily admit that. So, but I learned a tremendous amount from that, and won't make those mistakes again. Yes, sir?
Let me give you an example. There's a school called Shanook Middle School, that I wanted to be named Southfield Middle School. And every day I drive by that school, and I'm thinking, "I lost that battle." But the kids at that school know that school is Shanook. When I refer to that school to kids or parents, it's Shanook. But in my mind, I lost that battle. But Shanook is Southfield Middle School. But you, you, you already experienced it. You're gonna get hit by so much stuff that you are not gonna be able to hold on to this, because the next thing is right around the corner. And so all I ask is that, yeah, keep that, keep that in mind. If you, human nature, you're not gonna be able to just drop it. But be ready to move on to the next thing.
Right.
Because that's what we're counting on.
I can move on to the next thing. And, and I'm talking about, I mean, something very serious, right, like naming a school or something that's not, you know, but, and there, I don't think it's gonna happen very often. I hope it doesn't happen at all. But losing a vote is, that's one thing, you know, something that I think maybe is really affecting people's lives in a different, that might be something different, right? But, but I, yeah, I'm, if it's something like that, I have no, no problem.
Well, well.
But, sorry, go ahead.
One last thing, I know, I have a problem with what I'm doing. What you think may be serious, or may not be serious, may be very serious to the next group. Just keep that in mind.
Sure.
And that's, and that's exactly where we go on, is that the things that, that may be focused, that we're focused on, you know, it, the trickle down for others is tremendous that, that may not be in our, in our circle. And it, it's, everything affects someone somehow. And we have to remember that every single time. And, and it may not be sternest in the face. That's, that's the hard part. Okay, where are we?
B.
B, moving on.
Okay.
Common board-focused areas, goals, and next steps.
So given that this is a, a new board, we thought it would be helpful to have an opportunity for the, each board member to think about, right now, as in your position, what are your top three priorities? And we could chart those for each individual board member and see if, right now, there are areas of consensus. So top three issues, top three focus areas, top three priorities. It's, it's difficult, because there's a, a lot of priorities. But to really surface, what are those priorities of each board member, and to see if there's some areas that the board collectively wants to, to focus on. And then if there's one or two of those areas right now, again, this is just, and something that the board could do potentially periodically, and then identify what are the goals or next steps on that area of agreement. So I think the first step is, each board member identifies, what are your top three priorities right now in this present moment?
I'm ready. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're ready to go already, but you go. All right. Well, if you're so zippy, I'm gonna call on you first.
I'm ready.
Yes, please.
I'll wait.
Give me like 30 seconds.
I need to go to the bathroom. I need to take, I need to take him to the bathroom.
Can you take, just take a, take a five-minute recess here, if we need a break?
Sure.
All right, let's take a five-minute recess.
I'm not really.
Sabri. Sabri, just don't do three at a time.
Ever just don't do three at a time.
Okay, so we got our three areas of focus here. So, Ron, I'm gonna call on you first because you were.
All right. Safety. Student safety and, and campus safety, I guess I, I just wanna stress that because I do believe they have the ability to slide during this thought of COVID and all these other issues, but we gotta keep our campuses safe. Safe. Keeping schools open. Funding.
Perfect. Thank you. Micah, I'll go to you next.
Are we ever gonna have a discussion on these? Is that the idea?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I agree, like the safety of kids and the real pandemic. Understanding and navigating COVID.
Is that, is this what you said after safety?
Like, the safety of students. I, I wanna have a discussion about the safety of students and, yeah. And understanding and navigating COVID. A quick note, this is, I only have two, but a quick note, in, in Robert's Rules, I was just told that if three people, if three board members request it, then it, and according to the rules, it has to be put on the agenda. Is that, can we look that up and verify that?
Sure.
Like the, like the next meeting agenda?
Or whenever, yeah. If, if three, if three different people request something, then according to Robert's Rules, that maybe that, that needs to, that, the rule is the majority wants on the agenda, has to be on the agenda.
And I, I think, and I do have a little Robert Tools book and, and Mr. Connors has it now too, so we can reference it.
Yeah. Just look that up.
Yeah, that might be in the context of a, of a meeting because the, like, yeah.
Just clarifying what I, we're clarifying that, yeah.
Okay, Diane?
This goes under funding, but I was real specific. I said we can increase COVID funding, enrollment and transportation. And those are big things that are hopefully being, willing to discuss in the legislature, so pre-COVID funding. But I think my second one maybe goes with that, but it goes beyond that. Maintaining current staffing and/or increasing as the state provides, so. And so with that also, so no unfunded mandates. So that we do, you know, have funding to provide whatever services, staff, programs, whatever, but that'd be funded. And then focus on pre-apprenticeship apprenticeships for either our tri-TE students or it can be any of our students too. I know we're, we're there partially, but we need to be working on that. And there's something called pre-employment credits for students who are participating in, Senator Roman was talking about this. So if our kids are in the CTE classes, they can actually start working as a pre-CTE. And so they can actually get credit for that. So that's that twenty-four credit thing that, that should have been ways our kids could get credits.
Gabe, you ready to roll?
Yeah, so top three issues for me. So this is gonna tie into a little bit, I think, of what a few people said, but overarching COVID. So understanding COVID, right, masks, vaccines. The application of like policies at individual schools. So schools doing things different or more restrictive than others, so kind of the whole, that bubble. Second issue for me is performance, like student performance. Understanding that and then diving into some of the the performance over these last couple of years. I think OSPI released some data that was not favorable recently. So how, how was KSD? How's that kind of looked for us? And then the last one kind of goes into funding budget. So I think when we start talking about some of these other things that are gonna impact the budget significantly for future time.
Great, thank you. Okay, I have only one new one. So, again, going, kind of going back with Ron is keeping the kids in school, you know, in person full time is my number one. Number two is I wanna see us continue to increase our graduation rate. You know, our graduation rate is quite good, but you know, it's not a hundred percent. So I wanna, I'd like, that's kind of another one of my ongoing themes. And been really funding. I really wanna make sure that we're able to pass our bond here coming up. And I think that's, needs to be top of our list. So if I'm looking at this, Tracy, so let's jump in here. You know, one of the things I think we're all talking about is obviously, you know, we wanna keep the schools open, you know, and that's, to me, that ties in with, you know, understanding COVID, understanding, you know, what it takes to make sure these kids, these schools are safe. I think they all kind of fall, Ron, I don't wanna speak for you, but is that, you know, we have, we have safety as far as the health, the health and wellness of the, the students and the teachers. Then with safety as far as, you know, just overall, you know, making sure everyone is in this safe environment. Anyway, I mean, I think those are, you know, so we've got, so where was we? So we've got, sorry, I lost my, my.
No, it's all right. I'm good, I'm good when you do that.
So again, we wanna make sure we keep the kid, keep the school open. We're concerned about, you know, understanding COVID and what that, how to navigate it. Funding seems to be up there for, with everybody. There's three. Gabe, I think, you know, our, our student performance and graduation rates, I think, kind, kind of go hand in hand. Not, not really, but we're, we're really making sure that with our, our children are, are going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Because again, if they're performing well, they're more likely to graduate. So I think, I think we've got, you know, several, several points of crossover with everyone. Would you, would, would you agree, Micah, that?
Yeah, I, I do agree, yeah. I mean, funding is real popular, funding, safety, COVID. I really like what Gabe said. Gabe actually said something that I don't know that it kind of made me flow into Vader, but, but every school is sort of making their own different rules. So that's a real big issue. I've, I've been visiting schools and every school is running by their own set of rules. And I'm like, dude, these kids have enough restrictions on them as it is. We don't need extra layers of restrictions imposed by individual schools above and beyond what the state already has. We're one of the most oppressed states there already is. We don't need more. So, and so that's a real good one, Gabe.
But I think a lot of that stuff's all just gonna tie into funding too. I mean, it's gonna, you know, you go again, like in regards to COVID, right, you have mandates and if you go against mandates, you're gonna lose funding. You potentially have vaccine mandates, which if you do that, then you potentially lose a lot more enrollment. Go and then now you lose millions of dollars for disenrollment. So you, you have both sides of the funding coin, I guess, that way. So in my, just reading these and, and talking, and my thought is whatever we talk about at the end of the day is gonna come down to some sort of funding and, and
Funding COVID.
Funding's gonna be a topic.
I also think I have a different opinion on safety than, than maybe what, maybe what Ron said. I think we have probably different, differing opinions on, on what safety looks like.
But again, but that's, if that's, if that's what we decide we wanna put on, you know, as, as we're looking at, at areas that we all wanna discuss and can find, you know, consensus on. And, and again, as, as we talk about things, we wanna make sure they're on the agenda. These are things that we need to make sure are being addressed on a regular basis. And making sure that we're showing, hey, this is a priority for us. We wanna see progress. We wanna see, you know, we wanna see how we're moving and how we're, we're measuring all that, that, you know, success or failure. Yeah. So looking at that, so, so Tracy, so we have, what do we, we got top, top five or six here? What have, what have, what have we got here?
I see three big areas of agreement. Safety, including COVID and campus safety and safety. And I see funding. And I see student performance. You, you talked about, you may, you said something about impacts of COVID or the real pandemic.
The real pandemic, yeah.
You, you said, you know, the, the data, the student performance data. Mr. Connors mentioned graduation rates. I mean, so I see that whole category is really student performance. So what I see emerged is safety, funding and student performance and fleshing out what each of those means.
I feel like COVID's its own topic, but I mean, COVID underlines every single thing. And I feel like we do need to have a, a good, robust discussion about COVID.
And that's came after, you know.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we need to have Dr. Amy Persons in here. I think we need to talk to her. I think that's, that's absolutely essential. How can we navigate COVID if we have, we're not directly speaking with our local health representative? That's very, very important. Everybody, I would think, would want that.
Okay, we need, we need to understand that also those rules are being passed down. And this is, this is not the time or the place for that conversation, but it's, it's, you know, the, the rules are, are set by them that we have to live with, whether we like them or not. And that's, that's the hard part, is that we can pepper her with a hundred questions. It's not gonna change the law or the, or our, our responsibility to live with them.
There's some debate about that.
Okay, well, that, but, but again, it's a, our, we have to remember that our job here is to educate our children. Get them through school and get them through the program, so.
Are you, are you implying that I don't remember that or what? I feel like every single, every turn you're going against me.
No, I'm not against you. I'm, it feels like we're getting off topic. That all of a sudden we're talking about getting in front of the, the, the public health director about COVID and, and, you know, what's going on. The rules have been set by others.
I would disagree with that.
Okay.
So can we have a discussion about it?
To, to what end, I guess?
To flesh it out. Because I think that there are, there's a open discussion about this. I don't feel like it's locked, locked and loaded and set. I feel like it's open discussion we can have. I am not clear on what extra things Dr. P, Dr. Persons has, has given to our school. I'm not clear about what things are from her, what things are from the state, what, what things are just guidelines, what things are absolutely mandatory. I'm not clear on all that stuff, you know? There's some data questions I'm just not clear on. I would like to have a discussion with her in the public setting and get those answers.
So, suggestion. So of those three kind of topics, safety and I'm including COVID
Okay.
in that, okay? Funding and student performance. Is there a top priority that then you would wanna say is a next step? So these are all important. There's lots of important things. But as the next step, I would like staff to come back with some data and information on one area and report on that. And that might raise additional questions and so forth. But is there one of these topics that you would want to prioritize for an agenda item? And we can, it sounds like you have some questions about rules versus guidelines.
I've had discussions with her and, and I feel like we have a very clear understanding. And then she goes to the school board morning, the school board meeting and says something completely different. And I, and I wanna understand why that's happening.
Ron, Ron's going through.
I would like to see my, the points that I was making about safety divorced from COVID.
Okay.
I think it's, it's going a different way. And, and it's because of that, that I think we lose focus on what I'm considering as safety. We go right back to COVID. And an active shooter can walk into the schools because we're focusing on a mask or COVID. I want that safety still, still in our.
Understanding.
I, so funding right now is rather up in the air until the legislature finishes it. So asking staff to provide a lot of that information. They could provide what funding we need, but as to what we have, I, I don't know that that's something that, that right now that they could give us concrete information on. You know, Gabe's point, our, the performance, uh, graduation rates, all our OSPI information, that's all out there. That's good, hard evidence that could come very, very, I, I shouldn't say easily, but is there for staff to get. But I would think that that would be maybe a, a first step.
For sure. Agreed, Diane, on that?
Yes, Gabe.
So my, my opinion is, is this, and, and if this isn't the right place, if, if we're talking about agenda items and we're talking about the next meeting or the next meeting after that, I, I think we ha, I think we have to look personally at COVID. Because I think what we're going to see and the community is gonna expect from us is they're gonna want to know about vaccine mandates that may or may not come down the pipeline in a couple of months. They're gonna wanna know where we are with keeping schools open right now, right? There's a lot of schools that have gone to remote for two weeks and whatnot. I, I think.
Across the state.
Across the state, yes, not KSD, across the state, right? So I, I think that topic in itself should be something we should, we should be able to discuss and come to kind of a consensus on as a board and as a school district, where we are with that. Because I, as a parent, that's reassuring to know, like if I, okay, we're not gonna close schools based on X, Y and Z, right? So, or we are, whatever the decision's made. At least I know ahead of time, so I can plan for it. I can take some of these obstacles and maybe get them out of my way as I can, as I can do this. So I believe that's a topic that we need to have on, on for discussion and kind of cross those those paths.
Diane, any thoughts on it?
On?
Yes. We're kind of, we're kind of circling on COVID here right advantage, so let's, let's keep it going.
And, and Gabe, I would agree with you because I think that's very important and I, I know that everybody wants to know that. It's daycare, parents, teachers, everybody wants to know that. We can have all good intent as board members and as our, our district staff. There are some things that may or may not be within our control then. And so I think it's good to provide the theory of what we have in mind. And I would, I would like to do that. Theory into practice doesn't always translate very well. And so I don't, I would like to give very good, solid information. I don't wanna mislead anybody. That would be my only concern, that we might provide some information that would, in some way, somebody could be misled and I, I don't wanna do that. So I think that's really important. So having that discussion, discussing those things, putting information out there about what our district can handle, what our load is, those kinds of things. I think is, is very important. I just wanna be so super careful not to make promises.
Sure.
Because that, that's, that's not fair to us, to people.
Ron, do you have any other thoughts?
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. So, so it seems like we wanna discuss COVID here at one of these meetings, which is fine. So I would suggest that we, so Tracy, I'm gonna ask you and the, the staff to, to come up with, you know, current guidelines, current. you know, current guidelines, current rules from state, from the Department of Health, what that looks like, so we can start. Because I think we need to, before we go down the road, I think we need to figure out what's our baseline. Where are we? What are the current rules? What are the statutes we have to live within? And, you know, the laws that state, you know, why we're doing what we're doing. Micah, you've mentioned several times you believe that there's other things that there's, more rules being applied than the bare minimum of what the state says. I would disagree with that.
I've seen that happen in person. I can give you 10 examples off the top of my head.
Okay, well, we can discuss that afterwards, but I don't, I, I think those are some things that we need to get some clarity on. And I'd like, what I'd like you to do is write some of those down for Tracy so she can look into them and we can go down that road. But I think we really need, let's get a baseline of where we are. Let's have a discussion at the next board meeting and say, hey, look, here's what we're doing. Here's mitigation strategies. Here's where we are. And we'll start from there. I think that's probably a good first step. And then, once we do that, if we think we need to have Dr. Person again, then we can invite her, see if she will join us at the following meeting. But I think we, let's get a baseline first and so we all have an understanding of what the, where we're stance is.
I'll just add to it. I've experienced the exact same thing. Multiple schools having different things. So that's what I'm saying.
And that's, we need to.
That's why we need to talk about it.
We need to talk about it and I think we need, let's do that offline or let's make a list and send it to Tracy and I, let's look at what those rules are, what, where we see the deviation from the rules.
Sometimes you don't know until you visit the schools and I haven't had a chance to visit all the schools. So I am going around and visiting them, but almost every school I go to, I question them, why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? Why are you doing that? And then they say, well, that's our school rule. And I say, is that a rule for your school? Is that a rule for the state? Is that, who's that rule for? And they're like, well, I don't really know. It's just our rule. And then we come to find out, like, oh, you just imposed that rule on yourself.
Again, so that's what we need to address because again, that's not, that's not the intent of what we're doing.
And I know you asked about the data, that's the KSD policies and stuff. All that stuff is, will be available, right, to review and all that stuff on this.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll prepare a really comprehensive report. Yeah, I've taken good notes, so.
Get your thumbs up in here.
Good. All right, we ready to move along? Okay, so, so community engagement is where we are.
We are. And just to do a time check, Mr. Connors and I had talked ahead of time. We had the learner profile. That doesn't have to be on tonight's agenda.
I was gonna push that.
Okay. So we can do the community engagement discussion and then push the learner profile board feedback to a board meeting. That doesn't even need to happen in a retreat, so.
And we've had information on that previously, so this is just our feedback on the final.
The next, well, it's like the next draft, yeah, so, okay. Okay, so on the community engagement piece, and this has come up a couple of times in the dialogue this evening, we wanted to talk about what are the current, what current structures are in place and what purposes do they serve? Have the opportunity for the board to talk about any additional structures or strategies they want to pursue. Have a discussion about the process that is used by the full board to consider stakeholder input and feedback. We touched on that a little bit earlier. And then how does the board work to consensus to provide clear information for the superintendent and her team? That's an important one to me. Okay, and my team. So just to start with a little bit of kind of baseline information. So currently, when you think about community engagement, there's a big listening aspect to that for board members to really have the opportunity to listen to stakeholders. And so there's some current processes in place for that that are all about listening, not about dialogue back and forth, but about listening. Public comment is one. And so having the agenda published in advance for the community so they can see what the board is talking about that evening and the public can see what those topics are and have the opportunity to come and make a public comment. Sometimes the board is gonna be, have something on the agenda where they're taking action on it, maybe a boundary decision or a budget decision. And some of those things actually require a public hearing to be along with them. But other things are just, you know, typical things that the board might be voting on. But still, the public has a right to know what those things are and have the opportunity to address the board about their feelings on that particular topic. And then, as you know, people might also come to public comment to talk about something that's not on the agenda, and that's fine too. That's really all about the board hearing from people. That's one way the board listens to people. Another thing that board members can do and do, do, is meet with groups of people. So you might have a person reach out to you and say, I have, I feel X is really important or I feel like I have a concern about XYZ. And a board member can, and we talked about this early, talk to that person and listen to them to really understand what their concern is, what they're experiencing or what their priorities are. A lot of times people might not have concerns, but maybe they're coming from another district where there's some great program in place and they would like to tell you about that. And so you want to listen to people and meet with people and you can certainly do that. You can meet with individual people or small groups of people and those are really listening structures. And the board members can do that individually or collectively. However, if three people do it, it's a board meeting. So then it has to be appropriately posted and all of those things. Email is another one. We talked about that earlier, that people might email the board collectively or individually to say whatever it is they want to say. And that's a great opportunity for board members to listen. Staff, I mean, it's not dissimilar. Staff also, we receive emails, lots and lots of them. And that's an opportunity for us to listen and respond to. So this, in addition to those structures, you know, I guess the question is, are there any additional structures or strategies that the board wants to talk through in terms of listening to stakeholders? The other, only other thing I would say is, this isn't a board thing, but we have district, you know, the district administrative team and we share the results with the board. We do an annual student survey connected to our strategic plan. And just last year, we started an annual family survey and an annual staff survey. And those results are reported to the board on an annual basis. And our individual schools and departments use those results to help shape priorities and goals at the building and district level. So those are some of the formal structures that are currently in place. So the question is, does board want to talk about additional, brainstorm, other types of things?
One you didn't mention, but I'm very proud that we're doing this year, is your superintendent-student large group that has brought a lot of information. And Zachary has done a good job in spearheading that too, but we have a lot of great students that have brought you a lot of information. And when I participate in lots of things throughout the state, people are pretty impressed by that and districts are starting to do that. Districts that didn't have student reps or those groups, and you probably talked about that in your superintendent groups too. But that's kind of a new idea for a lot of people. And so the fact that we're doing that and our students are so involved, I think is amazing. But I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So one, oh, sorry. One thing, one thing for me honestly with community engagement is, is hearing and giving the community a voice so that they can act, speak to us, right? And public comment is the main one, is where they can come and comment. That equates to 12 hours a year that the public can come in and make comments to the board. I would like to see us potentially provide more opportunity for public comment. And when I say that is, is it unreasonable? And again, this would be like a meeting, I guess additional meeting, but is it unreasonable to have two board members or even have a meeting on a certain day where we allow it's just public comment? They can come in for an hour and they can share their topics, their concerns. We can get that feedback from the community, okay? These are the concerns of the community at this point. Maybe we need to look into some of these. Is that something that's feasible? I just don't, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if 12 hours of our community being able to come in and share with us and then walk out the door and.
That's maximum.
I know we can do it on our own, right? I mean, I could go wherever and meet 50 people, but I think the community, if we're able to do it either in pairs or even as an additional meeting, I think the community, I think that would translate better to the community in terms of we're engaged with them, if it's not just one of us constantly going out and trying to do that.
There are districts that do do that. I don't know well enough how they do it, if it's set for a regular time or if it's just, an issue comes up, we have more people that can speak at a regular meeting. And so then they, I don't know what it's called, and join another meeting because it is the whole door that shows up. I'm not quite sure how they couch it out, but I do know that it has been done in other places.
Ron, any thoughts on that?
I don't, I don't have any other thoughts. I'm a bit confused. I'm confused in that we give time at the beginning of the meetings. During those times, we aren't allowed to interact. We listen. And we've had quite a bit of community involved. Having another meeting, I think we were hearing the same things over and over again. And if we, if we, if we take away from our reaction time, we won't have time to address the issues that's brought up at the regular meeting. Because a lot of issues are gonna come out. Like I said, a lot of them are gonna be repeated. I think what we owe to the public are actions for the ones that are brought up. They have, and the time before the meetings are not the only time they can respond and we know that. We get emails, we get letters. Those are still open. What we owe the public, the action. We need to report, what are we doing with these things that are being brought in front of us? So bringing more and more, and nothing against the public, I love the public, but they're gonna tell us multiple times, things that are not going well. And they have that right. It's just I want time to respond to it. I want time to fix what they're bringing in front of us and I hope this comes out the same, the right way. We are not paid professionals to do this job. We all have other things. Maybe Diane is retired, but everybody else has things to do. We have jobs. And we just, we gotta maximize the time that we presently have. That's what I'm trying to say. Give me issues, let's give them answers. And the sooner that we can give answers, we can move on to the next issue. We can attack a whole new set of issues. If you're just bombbombing me with issue, 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 all I'm gonna be doing is this and this and the issue. Yeah, that's my point.
Diane here, I want to give Micah a chance here before we do that. Do you have any thoughts on this?
You're just gonna shoot me down again, but my thoughts is that we've heard so much about something and I'm trying to take action. I want to have a discussion. I want to bring the doctor in here. I want to talk about it. I want to, you know, I have so many questions I need answers to. People have questions to answer to. That's what I want to do. I don't know what else to say. I mean, I've been saying the same thing the whole time. Nobody's listening. Very frustrating.
So Ron, a clarifying question on yours. And I understand what you're saying. So my question would be, if we, if there was a particular topic, I'm making this up, credits. So, you know, we changed from 22 to 24 credits. There's some discussion about going from 24 to 22. If there were enough people that were interested who wanted to know about that, would you think that was, again, adding to what you're talking about? Or would that be something that you would find more palatable?
I think if we have a hot issue, hot topic, a hot topic and the president and I also decided that's so hot that we need to meet and discuss that topic, I'm fine with that. I just don't want every third Friday set aside for the public to come in in addition to the regular meetings. Nothing, nothing against the public. I hope, public, I'm not saying anything bad. All I'm saying is that we have time set aside. Let's address those issues. And if a hot topic come up, you bet, we can set up another meeting.
I definitely want to clarify.
And I, I'm not saying every third, what I'm saying is, can, do we not have the ability to do a quarterly community town hall where it's open wider, more people can come in, a couple of us can be there and they can just share their comments? And be, and the community is such a large stakeholder in this process and the parents and giving them the ability to, even if they, honestly, yeah, they're probably all gonna come in the same stuff, but if 35 people come in and share that, I mean, at least they're getting the opportunity to do that because maybe they can't show up every other Wednesday night or whatever because of sports or other things.
Time constraints.
It just gives the additional, you know, quarterly two hours we could.
Have we not all got emails in the last month? It's like we're acting, we're, is there not a hot topic?
We've been getting emails over the last three years, 12 years.
But right now, is there not a hot topic?
No, 12 years of the hot topics. That's what I'm trying to tell you. There's always gonna be a hot topic. And so we have to address the hot topic.
I agree with you. I'm not arguing with you.
We can't continue to collect hot topics. We owe people answers. If they say a hot topic, let's solve that hot topic.
I'm on your side. I agree. Let's do it.
So I just want to clarify because I think the board has identified a hot topic in COVID and it's gonna be on the next meeting agenda. So I just want to make sure that that's really clear to everybody. What I heard from the board is you want information, report, update, clarification about where the rules are coming from, who, which jurisdiction, what the mandates are, where the flexibility is. All of that, what the statuses of COVID rates in our schools for staffing and all of those things. That's what I heard is gonna be a topic on the next agenda.
Right. What I'm adding to or what I was suggesting is we're talking about additional strategies for the board.
Absolutely.
My point is this, we've heard the community doesn't feel like they have got what they want from us, whatnot. Can we not allocate a little bit of additional time that we can open it up and hear the public's voice as an additional strategy quarterly for the next couple of quarters or whatever? Just to give the community the opportunity. And we can say we do it once and no one shows up, then okay. At least we've tried something right, rather than just have the opportunity to either email us, shoot us a call or come stand up. A lot of, a lot of times, you know, people may not be available. What about the parents working nights that wanted to discuss something, but they just don't call or don't email? I guess, to me, it's just another way for us to show the community we're here to listen and we want your ideas.
Understandable. And again, it just depends on how we want to do this. You know, we can look at opening up more time, you know, at the meeting for public comment, if that's what the board wants to do. You know, the last couple of meetings, you know, the last one we had, if my memory serves, we had right at, I think, 12 or 13 people signed up and we allowed a couple of other people to speak, you know, so we were not holding anyone back from speaking. 14. And everyone, and we got it done in our 30 minute, a lot of time. So with that, and a couple of times we only had two or three people speaking. So again, it's, from my point, we want to hear from the public. We're giving them the opportunity. I, I don't remember a time recently, Ron, you can remind me, Diane, whether we, where we said, hey, we just have two, we've got 45 people signed up to speak. It really has been pretty close to that 30 minutes timeframe. And so there hasn't, we haven't had to turn away any more than maybe one or two people. So it's not like it's, gee, I'm sorry, only 30%, of people who signed up were not allowed to speak. So, or were allowed to speak. So I guess I totally get it. not allowed to speak. So, or were allowed to speak. So I guess I totally get it. There, there's great sides of both of the stuff. You know, if you, if you want to go have some more town hall meetings, say, hey, look, two of us, you know, Mike and I are gonna go sit and and listen. We're gonna bring it back to the board, and here's what our, our hour-long discussion was with the public. And that might be a better, be better served to have that back and forth. Diane?
And one time, Mike, it's since you and I have joined the board, um, President Adams did increase to an hour time. I don't remember what the topic was. It was right towards the beginning. Um, and and so the, the time was increased. And then another option is in Robert's Rules of Order, if you have three people speaking about a particular topic, if you have a huge amount of other people speaking about other topics, it, it, I'm not saying to do this. I'm saying it is acceptable to say, you know, is there anybody who has anything different to speak about? And then, as we tell people, if you, if we don't get to you, please contact, email, talk to, call, whatever. I'm not saying that's always the best way, but it is, it is there.
I don't disagree with you, Gabe. I just, I guess I'm throwing out there that, uh, if, when we do this, or we do do it, I, I want, I'm a push for action. So that's gonna cost some more time. I, if, if people share something or pointing something out, if they just throw it out there and we let it die on the dying, then we are in violation of the purpose that we're here.
Yeah, and.
I want solutions.
Yeah.
That, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm getting this. I hear the point. I want time to solve it.
Yep.
All right. So we come up with the, I'm not sure we came to any great agreement on this. You know, and Diane, I think Diane has a good, good point here about taking, you know, when we do have something that we need to open up for more time, we can sort of discuss that prior to the start of a meeting if we want to. Is that, is that?
Absolutely. You have, you have the absolute ability to, to, to do, do what you, what you like. And so I know there have been times in the past that the board president said we're gonna extend the public comment time to an hour or whatever, uh, and that's been done. Um, I know that in, this is maybe my former district. I remember there were times where, uh, the board president would, like, multiple, multiple people would come and speak on the same topic. And really, what the board wants to know is, you know, it, the, not that, that the board doesn't want to hear from everybody, but if there's new, additional information that a new speaker can add to what the story is, then that's helpful. So the board president would encourage people to maybe just not repeat, you know, what was just said. But if there's additional information, you know, they have to share, please do. And and that would open up time for, to make sure all the topics that people wanted to talk about. Because sometimes what will happen is, you know, there might be ten people signed up to speak on one topic and one person to, signed up to speak on another topic. So it's a way to ensure that all the topics that people identified, you know, get, they get to be heard. So, but that's perfectly within the board's purview to determine whether to extend. Or if, you know, there have been, I know, just a couple times where it's like, okay, if you have anything new to add, please do. Otherwise, we're gonna cut the, you know, we're gonna stop now with the public comment. So that's, that's up to the board to determine, and you can determine it, as far as I know, and we can double-check Robert's Rules, but, um, you know, the night of the, the meeting, right? It can be published that it's thirty minutes, and you can determine to extend it for an additional fifteen or additional thirty or whatever you want to do.
Perfect.
And so I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm here to make sure that we implement whatever it is that, uh, you decide to do. So that's kind of, that's where I just need to make sure I'm understanding what you're, what you're wanting.
Right.
So I can help facilitate that.
And and by way of, of history, the, you know, we changed the way we were interacting with the public, you know, after the, basically the, the, the music program. They were cutting the music program. And what happened was, is the meeting basically devolved into a back-and-forth between the community and the public. And all of a sudden, a speaker would come up, and then there, the, the board's going back and forth with the speaker. And it, it basically ended up a free-for-all for three hours. And the, the, the meeting started at five-thirty, didn't even get started on the meeting portion until like, almost nine o'clock. And they had, you know, two hours of work to do. So at that point, they changed, and this was literally right after I got elected, that, okay, now we're going to say, hey, look, you've got two minutes. We, we are here to hear what you have to say. This is, this is about getting, getting feedback from the, from the, the public, because we want to hear what they have to say. It's not a back-and-forth. It is the, the public's chance to give us their information that they believe we need to hear. And it's our opportunity to listen, and to Ron's point, take notes. And if it's something that needs to be acted upon directly, then we say, hey, we're gonna act upon it. Or I say, Tracy, please look into this and make sure you give feedback to the board. And that's, it was not out of not caring. It was out of efficiency and making sure that we were listening and responding and acting in a, in a manner that was, you know, expedient and 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 good for everyone.
And it actually was that way previously. That was sort of a one-off time.
Was it?
That, that is the way the board has always done this.
Sure. Well, yeah, I was not aware of that.
I wasn't either, but I, I mean, I wasn't on the board, but I've been here at board meetings, so that is.
And that really, I mean, how we do it really is the norm, um, for, for both school boards, and also city councils and other, other jurisdictions. There's a, I mean, that's just kind of how it works. But again, I don't know if, so I'm not quite sure where, where we are on this one.
So are you, Dr. Pierce, are you asking, where do we want to go on like a town hall type of thing? Is that what you're wanting to know?
Like, I've heard a number of ideas brought up, um, and, you know, there's been discussion. I, I don't hear yet any really consensus on a direction. And so I, you know, there's status quo, you know, continue to do what we're doing and see how that goes. There's try something addition, in addition to that. Um, I, I'm just not sure where you all have landed.
I think, Gabe, I think you, you stated, let's try it. Let's try a quarterly meeting, open to the public, and let's see how it goes. I'm willing to go, I'm willing to support.
So as, I'm sorry, so as far as, as?
Open, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the wrong thing, Gabe, and I'm sorry if I'm speaking for you. An open mic, quarterly meeting, where the public can come and have less restricted time, where they can speak. That's the purpose of the meeting, is to listen to what the, the public voice. And I would go as far as, there's no other business that, that need, that meeting is geared to public.
So we will be adding a meeting quarterly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly. So we, or let me rephrase. We would be adding a quarter, a quarterly meeting for the rest of this year. And then we would add it, we could put it into the, to the, the calendar for next year, to do nothing but public, public comment.
Yeah, yeah. And I think we, I think we try it, right? If we go and we have the first one and no one shows up, then that's a good indication of whether or not that meeting's needed. But in, then that's where we can, in turn, if, if the public or community doesn't think we're, I mean, we can show what we've done, what we're trying to do to engage the public, and it's, it's a give and take there. So I, I, you know, if we don't want to collectively do it, or we don't want to put on the schedule, I mean, I'm still gonna, I'm still gonna try it.
So Gabe, I, I like the idea of a quarterly meeting. I, I would prefer that we don't say, if nobody shows up the first time, we don't do it again, because
Times are weird. People can't get out, whatever. It's a bad day. Who knows?
Because consistency is a thing, and, and people go, oh, they met and I forgot, but I'm gonna go to the next one. So I prefer if we're gonna do this, that we release that schedule and, and we make a commitment to do it.
So, and, and, and I'm, and I'm good with that? Again, I'm the, I, I'm good with this as well, if that's what you guys want to do. But again, it's still going to be a listening session. This is not, you know, it's, we're not there for back and forth. We're not there for, for an interaction. This is, come to us and tell us what your issues are, and we'll, and again, if we go from two minutes to five minutes, or however we want to do it, we, we still need to give it some, some parameters.
Sure. Yep.
And give it some structure, and we can, you know, instead of, we'll, you know, we're gonna make ourselves available for an hour and a half to, to do nothing but listen to public comment. If that's what we want to do, or an hour, what do you, you guys pick?
I do ask one thing, and this is selfish of me, is that as a school board member, we're required to attend a certain percentage of school board meetings. I ask that not to be included in the sent-down meeting. Can that be excluded outside of that? Because I travel a little bit.
I agree.
And I already have a set schedule.
So I think, I think the only challenge there would be if it's, if, if three board members are present, it's a, it's a meeting.
Okay.
So, so, and it has to be, um, you know, noticed and treated like a regular board meeting, because it is a board meeting.
So can we have an excuse?
Can you be excused from it? Absolutely. I mean, board members can any, anytime be excused.
I think Ron's asking that it doesn't account, that doesn't count towards the allotted absence.
So it would be if it were a meeting, right? That's the only issue, but you can be excused.
Yeah, yeah, that's excuse, but we're not. We could say, and it's due, not to be counted against.
I think, I think we can do that, and I can verify that. I, I, I'm not quite sure.
I don't.
When's on that, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't count that.
If you're out of town for work, you're at work.
Yeah, down to work.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a, well, we can follow up on, you know, when, when do you want to get the first one scheduled, and?
Yeah, I just think when you look at the schedule, and let's see, see if there's a, you know, if there's a month coming up where there's only one meeting, maybe we can squeeze it in there, and.
Is that something you would want to do on a Wednesday evening at the same time that regular?
I would prefer to do a different time, and I think that's what we're talking about.
That's what I was thinking about.
So that there's a day or a weekend, or, I hate to take a people's weekends, I really do, but.
I'm gonna bite you over Saturday.
And I understand that. However, there are families that don't, that work twelve-hour shifts or longer, and so a Monday through Friday is not necessarily always available time. So trying to be sensitive to that, and in.
There's, there's always gonna be.
I know.
I'm sorry for interrupting. There's, there's always gonna be.
So I understand your feeling about Saturdays, because we have families, and we, and those are important times that we have. I also think there's other issues that play into that for our families that work extremely long hours. So I don't know how to, how you balance that all out.
We can look at it, and even whether it's maybe, maybe the meeting starts at seven o'clock, say at seven PM, and, and pick a different day. I mean, there, there's a lot of ways we can, we can move that around. So.
I would like to do not a night meeting. I think I'd go pretty strongly about that.
Again, which, which is all good. The problem is, I work during the day, so.
I know, I know.
I can't take off at night.
And, and that's why I said, there's some problems there. But I, I think to be sensitive to people who do work when we meet.
Yeah, to move that, to move this along, I apologize.
That's okay.
But I think it's, it's, I think we're good with having an extra meeting, listening session specifically. Um, and then we'll start thinking about, I would like to see by the next meeting, let's see if we all can come up with a couple of ideas about when we want to do that.
Can you send a Google Doc?
I can, I can send something.
You could have Patty send a Google Doc.
Yeah, I have Patty send it, because I'll send you something. So, uh, let's do that, and then we can start working towards that, because that would be a good, good option.
So I, 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 I kind of feel like we've maybe addressed those through previous discussions tonight, addressed sort of that concept of, uh, board listening to stakeholder feedback, and then there's a process for that to come. And if there's a decision to be made or a direction to be made, then that's a full board decision. We kind of talked about that earlier. And then that full board decision gives the direction to the superintendent and my team about what to do. So that's why that's so important, too. So I feel like we've kind of addressed that, if you all feel like we've addressed that earlier.
I believe we have.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay. So, you know, we're only a little bit over our, uh, time for this, and we'll move that learning profile to a, a board meeting. We can do the same thing that we were gonna do tonight at a, at an upcoming meeting.
So not next, necessarily the next one.
Not next meeting, because we've got a new agenda item for the next meeting. And we want to make sure we've got adequate time for that. Okay?
Okay, so, next on our agenda is another executive session, because we get to go talk about more stuff. Uh, we talk about superintendent and cabinet performance. Um, hopefully it lasts less than sixty minutes. I think we can get through it pretty quick, but we'll, we'll see. Um, at the end of that session, I will come back and adjourn the meeting.
And, um, if I may, Mr. President, it's just maybe important to say that there will be no more board discussion or action
Oh, thank you.
following executive session. So it'll just be Mr. Connors coming back to close the meeting. So people don't want to know that, so they don't.
Wait around.
Yeah.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
But you are welcome. Yeah, absolutely.
Same room.
Back in conference room four. I know. Bring your candy, because that's the dessert. I know. Bring your candy, because that's the dessert.
Is this gonna be our main?
You can have the candy.
Is someone here? No one cares. Alright, no further business. The meeting is adjourned.